This meeting is now called to order. Welcome, everyone, this morning. Adoption of minutes. Could you read the resolution, please?
Certainly. Be it resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on November 23, 2021 be adopted.
Someone to move in second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Ketchapaw. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Go ahead, Sully.
Session item number three. It's dealing with property central Algonquin. Right slide. Disclosing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martin. Presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. At this time, I would like to call forward Brian Lima, Deputy Warden Marks, and Julie Gony. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
Brian Lima, General Manager of Engineering, Planning, and Enterprise, was awarded the Municipal Engineer of the Year Award from the Municipal Engineers Association. Brian was recognized for his outstanding contributions to Algonquin County in Toronto on November 26, 2021. Thank you, Brian, for your incredible work. Please join me in congratulating Brian.
Thank you.
Well done, Brian. Back to the speech.
Adam Warden, could I say one thing? This is a huge deal. Provincial honor. You could tell the esteemed Brian, there's a lot of admiration. So it is quite a deal. So congratulations.
Nice to have you, Brian. At this time, I would like to welcome Strategy Corp. They are here to discuss the County of Algonquin Road Maintenance Agreement Review. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. It's we, Madam Warden. It's a pleasure to be here with you today to discuss the outcomes of the Road Maintenance Agreement Review that we've been conducting over the past few months. My name's Jamin Chin. I'm a vice president with Strategy Corp. and the project lead for the study. And I'm joined today with my colleagues Olivia Lahey and Connor Sharp, who were the lead consultants for the review. Our goal today will be to walk you through the executive summary of our final report to highlight some of the key findings and recommendations, some occasions, and ultimately, in order to support county council, the municipalities in renewal of the agreement set to occur in 2022. Before I jump in, I do want to start by thanking all of the staff from the county and the local municipal partners for their time and effort. For conducting this review, it's a pretty involved process over a few months. And we certainly asked for quite a lot of support and information from all of the involved partners in order to explore some pretty complex issues. And our success in doing that is really predicated on that participation. So I think I'd be remiss if I didn't start by expressing our gratitude for all the support and effort that we received in making this project a smooth and successful process. So thank you very much. There are really two chief outputs of the work that we've done over the last few months that have been provided as deliverables for this review. There's first what we call a term sheet, which really outlines, in pseudo-legal language, the specific changes to the RMA the Advisory Committee has agreed upon, which should form, in our opinion, the basis for a revised agreement in drafting the agreement for renewal. The second document is the final report, which, as I said, the executive summary will form the basis for our presentation today. But this report is really intended to outline much of the analysis that went into it, as well as help to explain the findings in plain language and make clear what we believe Algonquin County should do to approve a renewed RMA. It contains recommendations that extend also beyond what strictly speaking should go into the contractual language and the contract itself. And so we'll walk you through the executive summary of that this morning. To start with, I do want to just spend a little bit of time rehashing the context and objectives of this review. We were retained earlier this summer to undertake the review with the goal of identifying key concerns and issues with the agreement as it stands today, based on the input of all of the parties involved, and to define a set of recommendations that all of the parties could agree upon for how to address them through the renewal process next year. The agreement, as you'll be aware, was first drafted and signed in 1998 and has gone through a number of revisions since then. But the basis for this review was really driven by a number of opportunities noted by both the county and the LMPs and highlighted as part of the service delivery review we completed for the county in 2020. Generally speaking, those opportunities pertain to a number of different areas, including improving the performance of services under the agreement and the mechanisms that exist to maintain a collaborative environment in conducting road operations on county roads, opportunities to reduce costs and improve productivity, as well as enhance the resident experience when it comes to county roads, and ultimately, to look at the RMA as a foundation for further expanding the way the county approaches shared services overall. And our mandate, broadly speaking, was to look at all of those areas for potential improvement and identify mutually agreeable strategies to help to caption. Our approach on the next slide was an iterative one. So we... Sorry, could you go to the next slide? Right. So we did strike an advisory committee of representatives from each of the local municipalities and the county. It was intentionally cross-functional and consisted of road superintendents, CAOs, and treasurers. And that committee really provided us with the oversight and guidance, and were the key decision-making body throughout the project, ultimately sponsored by the CAOs of the local municipalities and the county. We started first by working with both of those groups to try to list out our hypotheses about what the core areas of focus should be and how the agreement might be improved. And there were four that we landed on in total. The first is governance and communications. The second, the scope of services defined under the schedule to the agreement. The fourth is the funding formula. So how the agreement compensates the local municipalities for conducting maintenance on county roads. And then finally, reporting and enforcement mechanisms that are in place to support the sharing of information and the completion of services as agreed to under the agreement itself. So for each of those areas, we started by collecting relevant data, identifying the key areas of concern, and then developing draft recommendations and decisions to be made by the advisory committee and discussed and aligned on final recommendations during a series of workshops that built on one another progressively. In the end, each of those workshops was basically a decision-making forum for the advisory committee to discuss our findings, agree on potential changes to the agreement, and/or the overall functioning of road maintenance operations. And those decisions really form the basis for the recommendations in this report and the term sheet. So the recommendations are really a synthesis of both our analysis of leading practices and opportunities for improvement, as well as those that were agreeable to all of the partners around the table. And each of the documents, both the term sheet and this report, are structured around those four areas. On this slide, we summarize... I do want to summarize at a high level what those issue areas really break down into. So when we're talking about governance and communications, our focus is really on addressing or concerns related to collaboration on operational matters, a lack of clear dispute resolution mechanisms beyond escalation to county council itself, developing processes for amending the agreement in the interim periods between renewal, and addressing areas that have caused general misalignment on the nature and responsibilities outlined in the agreement in the past. And ultimately, the goal being to create an enhanced structure for managing road maintenance activities on county roads over the lifecycle of the agreement. The second area on scope of services, our focus was really on kind of three things. The first is clarifying service standards that have led to disagreements over the performance of activities that are governed and defined in the RMA. A better delineating what we mean with respect to capital versus maintenance responsibilities, which is the delineating factor between county and local municipal responsibilities under the agreement. And then looking at whether or not there are certain specialized services that it makes sense for the county to provide across all of the LMPs rather than based on economies of scale. And so, in other words, is there a greater direct role that county... It makes sense for the county to play in completing the activities defined under the road maintenance agreement. When we're looking at the financial model, the goal is really to assess the sufficiency of the funding formula versus the cost of delivering the services that the local municipalities do. And on reporting and enforcement, we looked at how to improve consistency in the reporting and data collection, better harmonize the service levels that are provided across each of the local municipalities versus what's defined in the road maintenance agreement, and to ensure that the county has appropriate mechanisms to enforce RMA obligations and that the local municipalities have effective structures with which to raise concerns and have them addressed. The result of the work on the next slide is really a wide-ranging set of conclusions and recommendations, most of which form the bulk of this report, which, as you can see, is quite a lot longer than the few slides that we'll have a chance to speak to you about today. But I do want to summarize sort of the key findings and proposed changes that were agreed upon by the advisory committee and based on our work throughout the review. The first is that we have developed and proposed a revised governance structure and communications processes that have clearly articulated, I think, the principles that underpin the agreement with the goal of clarifying how the relationship should work in the operation of the agreement. But also, key here, I think, is the inclusion of regular reporting and escalation processes that include the CAOs on a regular basis as part of the overall shared services governance structure. The goal being to have a more organic approach to managing potential issues as they arise and being able to address them through a mechanism other than just interpersonal effort. From a service perspective, there's a substantial set of amendments to the service schedule to clarify and simplify standards to create better alignment and understanding of who's responsible for what and to what level of service it should be provided, particularly focusing on areas that have created disagreement or misunderstanding in the past, or service standards that were viewed as not necessarily relevant or reasonable, given certain circumstances. That also included identifying a number of shared procurement opportunities that the county can take a lead on, just based on, as I said, those economies of scale and the ability to procure in bulk or a better understanding of the assets and conditions that need to be addressed through those services. On the funding model currently in place, I think there were two key conclusions we were able to draw. As I said, our goal was to assess the sufficiency of the funding formula versus the cost of service delivery. So in other words, is it a fair price that's being charged and being received? And there's two key conclusions, I think, that we can draw and that I'd like to leave you with. The first is that, based on available data, the current funding formula seems adequate to cover the costs associated with maintenance of county roads by the local municipalities. But I will state that the data is, in fact, that's available today, not really sufficient to draw a definitive conclusion one way or another. So we were forced primarily to rely on self-reported total costs provided to varying levels of detail and with varying degrees of confidence by each of the municipalities. So there's different ways of looking at what costs are included, different ways of calculating those costs, and different methodologies and approaches to doing so. And so, in an ideal world, we would standardize the data we were able to collect, conduct a bit of an independent construction of a model, and assess funding formula against that, when in reality, we were relying primarily on the data that was highly variable across each of the local municipalities, which is not necessarily ideal to draw a conclusive opinion about the formula. However, the self-reported costs being, I think, the best determination of each of the local municipalities as to the costs that are related to maintaining county roads. As I said, there's no evidence that the current funding formula is insufficient versus those costs, which is a reasonable conclusion to draw based on your own estimates. Our recommendations are really twofold. The first is that, based on the available data, as I said, the current funding formula should form the basis for remuneration under a renewed agreement. But the second is that the county and local municipality should harmonize the data that's collected and reported to a much more detailed level. And we've provided a template as part of our recommendations and specifications around the data that we believe should be required. Based on the collection of that data, it makes sense to conduct that analysis again once the standard data is available. And the financial formula can be revisited in the interim period between renewal periods, based on the revised governance model that's been proposed. So there's no necessary need to wait for another five-year renewal cycle to be up to look at this question. Ultimately, it can be brought before the CAOs and county council at any point in which the data is available and analyzed. And finally, on reporting and enforcement, we've developed harmonized and standardized reporting mechanisms, including related to the collection of that more detailed information on costs and operations I just discussed, but also looking at ways to simplify the reporting obligations by the local municipalities and other areas to enhance data collection and compliance and reduce the administrative burden for staff at the local municipal level. Additionally, as part of looking at reporting enforcement, we discussed the potential for the county to invest in GIS-linked asset and work order management solution, which greatly ease the amount of effort required to collect that data. And we've recommended that standardized performance reporting be escalated to the CAOs on a regular basis to better drive an understanding of how the agreement's being adhered to and performance over the course of operating on county roads as governed by the RMA. Finally, on the next slide, all of these outcomes are intended to be achieved through what amount to a total of 17 high-level recommendations that are laid out on this slide, each of which includes a number of steps and changes that will be required. And all of that detail is contained in the body of the report and the term sheet. I'll refrain from reading each of these out, but essentially, these represent the steps we believe need to be undertaken as part of the next agreement renewal and operational cycle in order to address those key issues and concerns that I highlighted upfront and achieved the outcomes I just spoke to and that were agreed to throughout the process. So if implemented, I think these various initiatives would go a long way to addressing both the near-term concerns and issues that were raised through consultation, as well as opportunities for general improvement. But I think even more importantly, set up the county and the local municipal partners to continuously improve the execution and terms of the agreement over time through improved governance, communications, and that data that's required for decision-making and an understanding of the true cost and service levels being provided. I think that about to pass my time. Would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, provide any additional information about this presentation or either of the documents that we've provided. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions from council? Okay, Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to probably Brian. I was just wondering, with the tracking associated with road maintenance, is there any way that through our asset management... I think the most municipalities have some sort of program for asset management. Is there some way to do that tracking through that that would help everybody in the long run to track where the costs actually are?
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Jones. Yes, one of the recommendations coming out of this report is actually the implementation of an asset management and work order system that ties or links back into our GIS system. So that application is also being considered by the Budget Committee for inclusion as part of the 2022 budget.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
I was curious how our central Algonquin staff felt about this. I'm sure Mayor Martin has as well, but message I got that they're pleased we're going in the right direction. Probably wish we'd done this 10 years ago, but we didn't. So, but, you know, they're satisfied that we're headed in the right direction. So I'm satisfied with the report and agree with it.
Any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none. Thank you again for the great report, and have a great day. Julie?
The recommendation is that the presentation from Strategy Corp. be received.
Okay. Counselor Purcell and Counselor Martin? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. We do have another delegation today from Ian Fleck, Algonquin County Land Division Committee, and it's a report for the Algonquin County Land Division Activities for 2021. And welcome, Ian. And the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden. I'm going to just highlight this report because I understand you have copies of it and have seen everything. So I know you have a busy day. 2021 was a year filled with new and ongoing challenges. Nancy Pasto, manager of planning, who was acting in the position of Secretary Treasurer, stepped into the role in May when Ashleen Laverty, planning technician, was sworn in. Ashleen was hired in April 2021 to firmly fill the role of Secretary Treasurer. And this position involves keeping of files, minutes, records, and decisions of all applications for all their official business of the committee. The Secretary Treasurer attends all meetings and acts in advisory capacity regarding the policy and procedure. At the beginning of November 2021, Ashleen resigned from the role, and Nancy became the acting Secretary Treasurer until such time as replacement was hired. The ongoing COVID-19 pandemic has continued to take a toll on the Land Division Committee and has produced changes in related processes. Since the beginning of 2021, meetings have been conducted through a blended model of video, telephone contracts, and in-person attendance, when virtual attendance was not possible. Meetings are also streamed through Facebook Live to reach a wider audience. Starting in July 2021, committee members were invited to join county staff in person to conduct the meetings. And public attendance was still limited. We tried to limit public attendance. Despite the pandemic, however, the Land Division Committee received a high number of applications for consent, which is expected to continue into the new year. We have seven members, and you all know who the seven members are. The largest number of applications continue to be surplus farm dwellings and lots within settlement areas. Due to this, the consent application form was revised to make surplus farm dwelling criteria more transparent to applicants and members of the committee. And the committee also deals with refunds and right-of-ways and the creation of new farm parcels. And you've all got copies of the different appendix and alignment with strategic policies and that. And there's just one thing I'd like to say. It's 2022. Here we return to a more usual pre-pandemic structure, we hope. And the high number of applications received will be maintained. It has been a pleasure serving as chairman and working with such a committed group of individuals over the past year. And as you all know, we're looking for a reassigned analysis. Nancy Pasto has resigned and moved on.
Thank you very much, Ian, for your report. Are there any questions or comments concerning Ian's report? Counselor Purcell?
Yes, Ian, I... Just on behalf of all of us, we thank you for what you do, which is a gatekeeping duty for us. Are you seeing an increase in people trying to bend the rules or more activity of people trying to sever things they shouldn't sever? We all know what's going on as far as our local economies are concerned with regards to investment in expanded housing, et cetera. So are you seeing a lot more demands upon you folks that way?
And we have straightened out, as everybody knows, the application and made it more thorough. And it has to be totally complete, or we don't accept it. It has to be all areas of the form has to be filled out. And that's helped really well. And there is a lot of people who want farmhouse. Here a farmer buys a piece of property. They're all there clamoring for the house.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you.
All of you have a happy holiday season.
Same to you.
It resolved that the report titled "Algonquin County Land Division Activities for 2021" from the Algonquin County Land Division Committee Chairman, dated December 9, 2021, will be received and filed.
Counselor Jones and Counselor Mennel? Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Moving into the committee of the whole?
It resolved that we now move into the committee of the whole.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin? And Deputy Warden Marks? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. So the first report is 6.1, Warden's Activity Report for November and COVID-19 update, 2021. Warden Tom Marks? Oh, sorry. Do you want to read the report? I apologize.
There are three additional items that we ask that council consider as part of the agenda for today. First is an additional planning report from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning, and Enterprise that was missed when staff were compiling the agenda. A print copy is before you. The second item is a verbal update regarding emergency procurement in the Terrace Lodge redevelopment project, also from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning, and Enterprise. And lastly, council committee appointments. So we do require a two-thirds majority vote for consideration of these items. So the recommendation is that an additional planning report and verbal update regarding emergency procurement, both from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning, and Enterprise, as well as committee appointments, be considered as part of the December 9, 2021 council agenda.
Someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Counselor Martin? All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Now we'll move into 6.1, Warden's Activity Report. If you read the resolution, please.
It resolved that the November 29, 2021, report titled "Warden's Activity Report" and COVID-19 update submitted by the Warden will be received and filed for information.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Purcell. Now I'll turn it over to Deputy Warden Marks. Did you have any further highlights for this report?
No, I think the report's fairly thorough. I'd attempt to answer any questions if anyone had any.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Annual Council Committee Update, County of Algonquin-Central-Algonquin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee.
It resolved that the annual council committee update, County of Algonquin-Central-Algonquin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, submitted by 2021 Warden Tom Marks, dated November 29, 2021, will be received and filed for information, and that the County of Algonquin-Central-Algonquin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference be amended to allow for electronic participation in accordance with Bylaw 2047, being a bylaw to amend, Bylaw Number 1941, referred to as the procedural bylaw, and to repeal Bylaw Number 2013, and that these amendments be made subject to the approval of the municipality of Central Algonquin.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Jones. And did you have anything further to discuss about this report, Deputy Warden?
Again, I think the report is fairly self-explanatory, but we do have our new Sarah Savoy, which is a welcome addition. And met with her three times. Very impressed. And again, we still have her. And again, we have, still have our great chair. We're looking for a couple of members, I think that'll be something on our agenda, so you know, important, so that's all.
Thank you.
Certainly welcomes her.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Next item up is Annual Council Committee Update, Connectivity Committee, 2021.
It resolved that the December 1, 2021, report titled Annual Council Committee Update, Connectivity Committee, submitted by 2021 Warden Tom Marks, be received and filed, and that the terms of reference for the Connectivity Committee be revised to indicate that the committee chair be elected for a term that coincides with the term of council.
Someone to move and someone to second, Counselor McPhail and Counselor Ketchabaw. And did you have anything further to add to this report?
No, I think it's just logical, so.
Perfect. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Elgin County Museum 2021 Annual Report.
It resolved that the report titled Elgin County Museum 2021 Annual Report from Counselor Sally Martin and the Manager of Museum and Archives, dated December 9, 2021, be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Jones and Counselor Martin. Counselor Martin, did you have anything further to add to your report?
No, we've changed the committee composition slightly by adding another member of a museum in Elgin County. It used to just have one, and it's nice, because we have them from the far east to the far west, it'll be nice to have two of those rather than just a member at large. And we need to be very thankful for Mike and all the work he does. He really is an excellent curator, as well as his other jobs that he's doing, but he certainly has done a great job lining up displays in very tough times.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Annual Council Committee Update, Environmental Advisory Committee.
It resolved that the Annual Council Committee Update Environmental Advisory Committee Report from Counselor Grant Jones, dated November 25, 2021, be received and filed, and that the terms of reference for the Environmental Advisory Committee be revised to indicate that the committee chair be elected for a term that coincides with the term of council.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Menel and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn it over to you, Counselor Jones. Did you have anything further to add to your report?
Yes, Warden, thank you. Just a few things, obviously you've seen some of the places where we've made comment on the official plan and sign campaign. We've had information received from Kettle Creek regarding Elgin County Water and what the authority does. We continue to investigate the possibility of a pollinator garden/picnic area at the north end of the building, and also sustainable procurement practices we'll continue to look at in the future. We've discussed roadside habits in our ditches, what the possibilities could be there in the future. And I guess next steps is to continue to investigate some of these initiatives that we're looking at. We're asking that the chair be the term of council, and I think when you have two members of county council on that committee and several public members that choose not to be chair or may not have the training to do a chair's job, I think it makes sense that whoever is elected chair just do it for the four years and have some continuity in that regard. I think that makes good sense. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jones. Are there any questions or comments? Head Counselor?
Just one comment, that Counselor Jones has been an excellent chair.
Thank you. Okay, with no further questions or comments, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Annual Council Committee Update, Health Recruitment Partnership Committee.
It resolved that the Annual Council Committee Update Health Recruitment Partnership Report from Counselor Grant Jones, dated December 1, 2021, be received and filed.
Someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Purcell and Counselor Ketchabaw. And I'll turn it back over to you, Counselor Jones, if you have anything to add.
Thank you, Warden. This is a really exciting group. It's something I look forward to each month with the progress we make. It's almost monthly, we make some sort of progress. As mentioned here, but I know Cheryl does a great job, and we've made some inroads working with General Hospital, with staff there, which has really been beneficial. Other municipalities are looking at our business model and starting to imitate what we're doing, so it could be more of a challenge recruiting in the future, because everybody's going to be doing the same thing we're doing, which is a good thing, I guess, but recruiting in the future between growth and the new physicians come in and want a more balanced work, private life balance, so they aren't accepting as many patients as they were, so the pressure is going to be on there to hire more physicians to cover that, plus the growth, plus retirement, so it's going to need the requirements of our city and the county. I'd happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Are there any questions for Counselor Jones? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. Next item up is Annual Council Committee Update, Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee, 2021.
It resolved that the Annual Council Committee Update Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee Report from Counsel Ketchabaw, dated November 24, 2021, be received and filed, and that the terms of reference for the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee be revised to indicate that the committee chair be elected for a term that coincides with council.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn it over to you, Counselor Ketchabaw. Did you have anything further to add to your report?
Thank you, Warden. No, there's nothing substantive to add to this report, simply to welcome you aboard in time to review the 2022 grant applications. I'm sure you'll enjoy the process.
Thank you, Counselor Ketchabaw. I look forward to it. Are there any questions for Counselor Ketchabaw?
Dennis.
Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. The next item is Annual Council Committee Update, Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Fundraising Committee, 2021.
It resolved that the Annual Council Committee Update Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Fundraising Committee, 2021, Report from Counsel Shiger, dated November 24, 2021, be received and filed, and that council consent to receiving a more detailed report, including a financial update, with recommendations for consideration in February of 2022.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Ketchabaw and Counselor Menel. I hope you can hear me, Counselor Shiger. I'm going to turn it over to you. Do you have anything further to add to your report?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and welcome. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to say good morning before.
No worries. Yeah, so just a couple of comments. As the report indicates, we will be coming back to council in early February with a more fulsome report after one full year of fundraising with recommendations. But for now, I will use my time to, first off, for a shameless plug for the campaign. If you're looking for Christmas gifts and for last-minute Christmas gifts, you can use your donations as gifts, so highly recommend that for this year. I also want to announce that just yesterday, we did receive a donation from a local business for $50,000, that's five zero, and more, I can't reveal more details right now, but needless to say, we're very pleased about that, and I want to thank the committee. We're pretty much on target for our first year, which is amazing, considering the circumstances we're working within. So we have an amazing group, an amazing committee, and we'll keep going. Thank you.
That's a very exciting report, and thank you so much, Counselor Shiger. Are there any questions for Counselor Shiger? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Terrace Lodge Redevelopment, 2021 Year End Update.
It resolved that the December 9, 2021, report titled Terrace Lodge Redevelopment, 2021 Year End Updates, submitted by Counsel Purcell, Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee Chair, be received and filed for information.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Jones and Counselor Menel. And I'll turn this over to you, Counselor Purcell, if you'd like to add a few things to your report.
No, I don't think there's a lot we need to add. We're still on target, on budget, which is what really matters, and the committee will be meeting early in the new year, just so that we're all well aware of all the moving parts, because as you know, with this particular project, there are a lot of moving parts, and there are some things that we probably need to discuss as we go forward. But I want to congratulate everybody, particularly staff and the folks involved in making it happen, because they're basically on automatic pilot now, they're making it happen, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. Deputy Warden Marks?
If I can make a comment, I had the opportunity to be down at Terrace Lodge a week ago, week and a half ago, whatever. You know, if you drive by, you really can't see much from the road. When you get inside and when you park, and if you kind of nosy and look around, it's impressive, so I was really pleased to see the pictures in here, because there's a lot going on there, so I'm assuming we're entertaining the residents, so you know, it's nice to see the progress. The pictures are a nice touch, I think, so.
Are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, sorry.
I would simply add that we should send a thank you to all the sidewalk superintendents.
Thanks for that, Counselor Purcell. Okay, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program for 2022.
It resolved that the General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program proposed by Marsh Canada Limited be approved at the proposed annual premium cost of $426,866 plus taxes commencing December 15, 2021 until December 15, 2022, subject to county refinements of proposed coverage, and that the General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program be renewed for up to four one-year terms for a potential of five-year contract, subject to annual council approval of the renewal program proposed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Purcell and Counselor McPhail. And good morning, Mike. Did you want to give an overview of your report, please?
Yes, please. Good morning, and thank you, Madam Warden, through you to county council. So this report provides details on the county's RFP process regarding the General Insurance and Risk Management Service Program. So the last update to council was in December of 2020, and it recommended that a new RFP be issued in the third quarter of 2021. We staff issued an RFP in October, and the RFP closed on November the 9th. Three firms responded. So prior to issuing the RFP, staff retained an independent risk management consultant, Joy Jackson, who provided information on the RFP and also conducted an extensive evaluation process. Joy is also present virtually today to assist should there be any questions. Once the evaluation process was concluded, the highest scoring firm and the lowest cost proposal was Marsh Canada, and Marsh is the county's current insurer. The premium cost for the new term is $426,866, which represents a 15% increase from this year's premium. There's minor changes to our existing coverage, which are noted in the report. In addition to the minor changes, the exclusions related to COVID are again included in our policy and will probably be for the foreseeable future. I also want to note that due to some performance issues during the last few years, county staff will work more closely with the reorganized Marsh team to address some of the responsiveness delays, and we will communicate and reach a clear understanding of the expectations for the new term. Our staff are generally pleased with the results of this RFP, given the current hard insurance market, and are confident that the county's requirements will continue to be met by Marsh Canada. At this time, both Joy, Jackson, and myself would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions? I'll go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Yes, Madam Warden, through you. I was curious about the increase. I know there's been a lot of increases in insurance premiums, but Central Elgin went out to tender as well, and they ended up getting $106,000 decrease through Cowen, which is now Intact. So ours is, it may be a one-time thing to get you on board, we're not sure, but we've been with the other one, the same one as County, for several years, but we're getting quite a reduction for 2022. So I'm just curious why we would have had that offer and you wouldn't when you went out to tender.
Through you, Madam Warden. I think, I mean, if you look at, there's a bit of a history in the financial section, and we kind of experienced that in 2018, where we had quite a dip in our insurance rate. I mean, I can't really explain the difference for this year. I know a lot of municipalities were seeing quite the increases this year. I know we budgeted, I believe, 25% increase for additional insurance coverage for this year, and we're looking at 15%. But if you look kind of year over year, really from that low point to now, it's probably around a 3% increase per year, so really not too bad, so.
Okay, are there any further questions? Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
Yeah, just a comment on that Intact was one of the companies that was, so they did have an opportunity.
Any further comments or questions concerning this report? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mike.
No problem.
The next report is Data Hosting Agreement Extension to December 31, 2022 with London Public Library.
It resolved that the report titled Data Hosting Agreement Extension to December 31, 2022 with London Public Library, from the Director of Community and Cultural Services, dated December 9, 2021, be received and filed, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to execute a hosting services agreement between the County of Elgin, Elgin County Library, and London Public Library Board to December 31, 2022, subject to review by the county solicitor.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Jones. Good morning, Brian, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Warden, and certainly our team looks forward to working with you and all the council in the upcoming year.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this report just recommends that our data hosting agreement be extended for the one year to end at the end of 2022, to coincide with our contemplative renewal on the catalog software, which will also take place at the end of 2022.
Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's carried. The next item is Lease Extension to December 31, 2022 for Elmer Library.
It resolved that the report titled Lease Extension to December 31, 2022 for Elmer Library, from the Director of Community and Cultural Services, December 9, 2021, be received and filed, and that the county solicitor, through the chief administrative officer, be authorized to provide notice of intent to extend the current lease for the Elmer Library to December 31, 2022, per consideration by Elmer Town Council.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor McPhail and Counselor Martin, and I'll turn it over to you again, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, for probably appropriate, we discussed his lease today. It does expire in June of 2022 after a 40-year term. I was starting high school in 1982, so. So we're recommending that it be extended to the end of 2022, so that it does expire in tandem with all of our leases for library facilities at all 10 branches, and that will be the matter of future report for you regarding what the future leases are going to look like, incorporating a bunch of considerations, again, a future report on that. If council does approve this recommendation, Elton County Council will still need to also approve it, and so in that regard, we're just seeking approval to bring forward notice. And I believe Mr. Gibson has a couple of comments as well.
Okay, good morning, Steve. Go ahead.
Good morning. I just want to point out, I was in my last year of law school. My only comment is, I reviewed the, I reviewed the lease, it's obviously a very long lease. It doesn't appear to have an express right of renewal or extension, so, but I think that there are workarounds, so understand that we may have to take a couple of steps, but certainly understand. but, uh, um, certainly understand the extension, and I understand that, uh, this approach may be acceptable to all parties. So I think that will, uh, that will work, but, uh, it may not be just as easy as sending a notice of extension.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Just one comment. I'd been teaching for eleven years at that point. After a university degree, but I, I helped with the fundraising to save the old Elmer Town. I, I handcrafted plates and I painted all the scenes of the town hall on it to help save the building. So, um, so that it became the library, and I'm very thankful it did.
Are there any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor McPhail. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you.
Happy holidays, all.
And thank you, Brian. The next item up is County of Elgin Market Comparators for Strategic Compensation Analysis.
It resolved that the December ninth, twenty twenty-one staff report titled County of Elgin Market Comparators for Strategic Compensation Analysis, prepared and submitted by the Director and Manager of Human Resources, be received and filed for information, and that County Council approve the following list of market comparators for utilization when determining compensation compared at the fiftieth percentile pursuant to our HR policy. The County of Brant, municipality of Chatham Kent, the County of Gray, the County of Haldeman, County of Huron, County of Middlesex, County of Norfolk, County of Oxford, County of Perth, County of Simcoe, City of Saint Thomas, the County of Wellington, and the City of Woodstock.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Uh, Counselor Jones and Counselor Mennel. Good morning. How are you today?
I'm well, thank you.
Um, I'm going to turn it over to you, and maybe you can do a brief overview, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden French and members of County Council, and thank you so much for having me here today. I'm here to present the report and answer any questions that you may have. As, as CIO mentioned, there are thirteen municipal comparators that we're seeking approval for, and I do want to note that, um, other than the removal of the County of Dufferin and the addition of the municipality of Chatham Kent and the County of Simcoe, this is the exact list that was approved by County Council in twenty fifteen. So we're pretty satisfied with it. We've been working with our consultant already with kickoff meetings, and she's quite pleased with, with the comparators that we've put forth. I do want to just take a moment and provide some information and an overview of this process of this project. It will be, uh, quite a comprehensive project for both the consultant and human resources staff. So the purpose of a compensation review is essentially two-part. The first is to ensure that positions are, uh, reviewed and evaluated appropriately, fairly, equitably, and, uh, according to council policy. And we really want to make sure that there's not going to be any potential spikes or gaps in our, uh, pay as well as we want to continue to recruit and top talent. So it's very important that way. I do want to stress that job evaluation and the whole process of compensation review is not to be self-serving. It is to ensure, like I said, that we can be competitive and, and retain top talent. The second part of a pay equity purpose, or sorry, the purpose of a compensation review is to ensure that we're pay equity compliant, and in doing so, um, it follows the Pay Equity Act, and the Pay Equity Act actually outlines, uh, methods to ensure compliance, and one of the methods used is ensuring that the job evaluation is, is in place. So by doing this, then we will meet pay equity compliance. And the process is multi-phased. We hope to have it completed and presented to County Council by the beginning of Q two, twenty twenty-two. But essentially, it's the consultant gathers the information, the data, we assist in human resources. We make sure that, uh, the plan is in place as well as that any information that they may need, say our organization charts, our, uh, salary structure and so on, that we have that available for them. And then following the, the review itself, then HR has a lot of work to do, and that's where we go out and we communicate with staff on the process and so on. The other thing we do is ensure that jobs are evaluated. Again, we have to meet the pay equity compliance. Jobs may be evaluated because of a new position. It could be because legislation has changed and there's major changes to the, the job description and the fundamentals, um, but also just that maintenance. So we make sure that we're compliant that way. And then the purpose of the market comparators, again, is we could, uh, go out to a larger group, but it's industry best standard or best practice to have, you know, about ten. We're, we're recommending thirteen comparators, and by doing so, we ensure that the jobs are matched accordingly. So more apples to apples, and we can control that. And with that, basically, I'm available to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for your report. Are there any questions, Counselor Martin? Go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm, sorry, Madam Warden, through you. Uh, I'm concerned about why we're replacing Dufferin, which has a very similar population, et cetera, to us, with the County of Simcoe, which is huge in comparison to us, plus surrounding Toronto and that area. So I'm just, I'm curious as to why that, Chatham Kent, I can see because it's very close to the County of Oxford in size. But I, I'm just curious why we would be putting the County of Simcoe in.
That's a great question, and one that when, when we were looking at, um, our rationale. So a market can be, um, defined in, in multiparts. It could be geographic location, but it can also be who we may lose top talent to. And, uh, that's, that's really why we added the County of Simcoe, because we've had, um, some interested, uh, uh, applicants that, um, or candidates that could go over to the County of Simcoe. And I know it's, it's afar. It's not close to us geographically, but people are, um, willing to relocate, and so that's, that's essentially why.
Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
And this is a, a bit of a request, I guess. When we do this, if we could come up with some sort of a cheat sheet or a small summary for the lower tiers, including some benchmarks, that would be great, because we all end up reinventing the wheel each time we do this, and we have to do it. And perhaps we could end up with some links where most of the work's been done, and we may be able to get a, a much more reasonable rate to do it at our own levels, our own municipalities. So at least if we had a, a cheat sheet and, uh, some benchmarks, that would help us all, I think.
Well, we had Deputy Warden.
I'm really pleased with, with the report. It's, um, I think it's critical for us, for our ratepayers, to find that, um, balance. And, um, you know, we have to be fair. It, it's that simple, and I, I'm just glad we have the talent in our staff to, uh, give us a justification, because it is, it is a fine line. If you have good staff, you have to treat them well. Balancing that with, uh, residents, the ratepayers, so I, it's pleased with the report. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Ketchupaw.
Thank you, Madam Warden, uh, through you to, uh, uh, staff. Um, in light vein of, uh, Counselor Martin's comments and question, I'm still not convinced, uh, okay, if you wish to include the County of Simcoe, because they may be a, a potential, uh, I don't want to call them a threat, but potential, you know, for, uh, taking or encouraging staff away. Then why would you discount and not keep Dufferin in the fold? What's wrong with Dufferin?
Uh, through the Warden to Counselor Ketchupaw. It's a great question, and, and quite frankly, um, we, we can include them. If that's council's desire, we're happy to. The reason why we took them off is because, again, industry best practice is to have around ten, and that's just so it's manageable. Um, we're recommending thirteen. We felt that the thirteen recommended matched quite well, um, but we can add and we can have fourteen. It's no problem at all.
Okay, the reason, um, I, Adam Warden, is that from the economies of scale, I mean, you're looking at the County of Simcoe, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand versus, uh, Dufferin of sixty-one thousand, closer to us. Uh, you just, I don't, I'm not seeing it myself.
Um, did you have your hand up, Counselor McPhail?
I answered my own question.
Oh, okay. I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity. Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Yes, and as, uh, sorry, Madam Warden, through you. Uh, as Counselor Ketchupaw stated, I, I am still rather uncomfortable with having, I know we might lose people to Simcoe, but that's the Toronto area, which has a different draw, uh, much costlier living down there. I mean, they may get paid more, but they're going to pay a lot more to live as well. And, and I don't understand, I'd rather have had something like Lambton or something which is nearby, very similar to us and could draw some people. That would, to me, this one just seems so out of line with us that I, I wouldn't be putting it in. That would be my comment.
Uh, through you, Madam Warden. So it sounds as though perhaps there's interest in adjusting the list to remove the County of Simcoe and replace it with the County of Dufferin, um, to maintain, um, the number of comparator municipalities is thirteen. So happy to make that adjustment.
Is, is everyone on board with that adjustment?
Yeah. Anybody superstitious with the number thirteen?
Are there any other questions or comments concerning this report? So, and everyone's comfortable with the adjustment? Is there, it's already been moved and seconded, so do, should, is that okay with everyone? All right. So with no further questions or comments, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Same to you. The next item up is Bridge Weight Bylaw Amendments, General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, Deputy CIO.
It resolved that the report titled Bridge Weight Bylaw Amendments from the General Manager Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, dated November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, be received and filed, and that the Bridge Weight Bylaw fifteen twenty-six be amended as follows. Fulton Bridge, B twenty-three, level one would be twenty-three tons, level two, eighteen tons, level three, nine tons. Gillette's Bridge, B twenty-seven, level one would be twenty-seven tons, level two, nineteen tons, level three, ten tons. And the Fillmore Bridge, or B forty-nine, level one would be forty-nine tons, level two, thirty-three tons, and level three, nineteen tons.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Ketchupaw and Counselor Martin. And I will turn this over to Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, I believe the report before you is self-explanatory, uh, and I can, uh, verify, counsel, that it is now correct. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Ketchupaw.
Comment, uh, Madam Warden? Yes, uh, this makes a little more sense to me. Uh, as the one who objected to the, uh, the previous report, uh, I'm happy to accept this one. So thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next item up is Urban Reconstruction Private Drain Connections.
It resolved that the report titled Urban Reconstruction Private Drain Connections from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, dated December ninth, twenty twenty-one, be received and filed, and that in advance of future urban road reconstruction projects, the local municipality be granted the option of requesting the inclusion of private drain connections, or PDCs, to private properties within the project scope where feasible, and that when requested by the local municipality, the installed PDCs be recognized as local infrastructure assets, and as such, all costs associated with their installation and any future maintenance and replacement remain the responsibility of the local municipality.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Purcell and Counselor McPhail. Um, I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Madam Warden, uh, recently jury in preliminary design, uh, for the Hamlet of Richmond Reconstruction, communication with, uh, municipality of Bayham, uh, the municipality formally requested a deviation from the county's past practices regarding PDCs. Uh, the report, uh, seeks council support for formal consistent policy regarding, uh, PDCs for all future urban projects. Uh, details are before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Brian? Go ahead, Counselor Ketchupaw.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Um, just as a comment, uh, I, I think, uh, I'm quite happy that, uh, local municipal partners have the option of either opting in or opting out. And I understand the, uh, the value of, uh, connecting PDCs, uh, when you're in the ground and already going. What's a little confusing, and particularly from Bayham's perspective, is the idea that, uh, it's a county project, PDCs are installed, and yet the expectation is that the local municipality take on the administration of these in a county infrastructure. That's why Bayham opts out.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Port Bruce Road Transfers.
It resolved that the report titled Port Bruce Road Transfers from the General Manager Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, be received and filed, and that at its meeting of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Elgin County Council considering the fol- consider the following matters by bylaw, resolution, or enactment. One, that portions of highways as specified in bylaw number eighteen twenty-two be removed from the highway system of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. Two, that bylaw number eighteen twenty-two being a bylaw to add highways, including, including lower-tier highways to the highway system for Elgin County, otherwise be repealed. And, three, that the respective related bylaws be amended as follows. Subsection I, be bylaw number eighteen twenty-six being a bylaw to remove and prohibit the right of passage over a portion of the Lewis Street Road allowance, which is south of the traveled portion of Rush Creek Line in the township of Malhein in the County of Elgin, be repealed. Subsection two, bylaw number twenty-five being a bylaw for the regulation of traffic and no parking. Schedule B be amended to remove the following sections. A, twenty-point-thirty, County Road seventy-three, which is Dexter Line, from the north side of Collin Street to the north side of Dexter Line for a distance of two hundred and ninety meters. B, twenty-point-thirty-one, Rush Creek Line from the west side of Bank Street to the east side of Imperial Road for a distance of two hundred and fifty-three meters. And C, twenty-point-thirty-two, um, Bank Street from the north side of Rush Creek Line to the south side of Imperial Road for a distance of a hundred and forty-six meters. And subsection three, bylaw number twenty-fifty-eight, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits, be amended to remove the following section from schedule A, which is forty kilometers per hour. Road seventy-three, section A, from the north property limits of Collin Street, north to the south property limits of Imperial Road, being a distance of five hundred and fifty meters.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Um, Counselor Mennel? And Counselor Jones? And I'll, I'll turn this over to Brian at this time.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. This report recommends, uh, appealing and amending bylaws associated with the temporary jurisdiction, traffic regulations, uh, of the construction detour entered into via a temporary jurisdiction agreement, all implemented in response to the collapse of the Port Bruce Bridge. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Just a comment, that this is really a housekeeping, uh, uh, agenda where the county is, the township transferred land over to the county, and now the county's giving it back, and so we're happy to get back our land, so.
All right, uh, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. The next item is Zero Emission Vehicle Infrastructure Program Proposed Charging Fee.
It resolved that the report titled Zero Emission Vehicle Infrastructure Program, final report and proposed charging fee from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, dated November twenty-ninth, be received and filed, and that a new electric, electric vehicle charging station rate fee of two dollars and forty cents be established, and that during the twenty twenty-two annual review of the county's fees and charges by law, number twenty-eighteen, an amendment be made to include the new electric vehicle charging station charge rate fee.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin and Counselor Purcell. And I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. Uh, this report details the final costs associated with the supply and installation of the electric charging stations at nine county facilities and proposes a recommended charge, charging rate for council's consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Head Counselor Martin.
Uh, just one question for you, uh, Brian, through you, Madam Warden. I thought originally we were doing twenty and Central Elgin were doing ten, and the county were doing ten. Is Central Elgin doing eleven now, or what's, I, I'm just curious when they're only nine?
Through the, through you to Madam Warden, to Counselor Martin, uh, the county has, uh, nine charging station locations. Earth Holdings has identified two as part of, uh, uh, the public. Earth Holdings has identified two as part of, uh, uh, the public, uh, the three, three-party partnership, and the balance resides with, uh, the municipality.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Go ahead, Counselor McPhail.
It's two dollars and fifty cents per hour, um, on a schedule to charger, you know, the additional, uh, cost for that charging system that has its own pay, uh, Visa card or whatever mechanism where you them to, uh, recoup those tasks. So you know what that extra dollars are in a, uh, schedule to, so, uh, charger?
Through you to Madam Warden, uh, through to Counselor McPhail, uh, the charge rate fee encompasses all service costs associated with, um, a user having to download an app and, and process their payment to, to charge their vehicle through, through the application. Correct.
Right. So there's no, there's no mechanism on the actual charger that keeps track of the hours used, or how does that all work?
Yes, uh, so the, uh, web-based, uh, application allows, uh, the user to monitor and be notified when their vehicle is fully charged, and likewise allows the county to monitor, uh, its energy consumption throughout the year and, and, uh, greenhouse gas emissions that are, that are, uh, saved from being amended to the environment. It's quite a comprehensive application.
So we collect our money off of the app?
That's correct. There's a direct deposit, uh, that occurs at the point of transaction.
Technology's wonderful.
Okay, are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. The next item is Elgin County Industrial and Business Employment Vacant Land Inventory.
It resolved that the report titled Elgin County Industrial and Business Employment Vacant Land Inventory from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise dated August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Jones and Deputy Warden Marks. And I'll turn this over to you, Brian, again.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, this report provides an overview of current vacant residential, industrial, commercial, and industrial land supply throughout the county. Uh, this report will complement the employment forecast and land budgeting exercise currently underway as part of the official plan review, and will be used as a tool to track development throughout the county. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
Uh, yes, I, I, I hope that as we go through this process, we, um, try to identify the land that I call sterilized, that is, um, in the hands of dreamers or speculators or people who will not, or have no desire to turn it into productive, industrial, commercial particularly. Um, in our local municipality, we had to, uh, pull out of a bit of a hammer where we're allowed to change our, uh, settlement area arbitrarily. We can take land out of resident, it's designated residential and make it future development and, and add something, something that will put money in the ground. Uh, I think we definitely need that tool for the commercial and industrial. I know in our municipality, virtually all of our commercial industrial is sterilized. Uh, people have been sitting on it or talking about it for years and years and years. And even when somebody with real money comes along with a real plan, uh, they will not move on it or won't let it happen. Uh, what that does unfortunately is create a, an artificial commodity. Uh, it drives up prices artificially. Uh, so we need to, as we go through this with the official plan, we need to look to make sure that we have the flexibility and the ability to even force people to do something or not do anything with that land. Our experience has been, uh, because we finally threatened to take some of these lands out of the zoning they were in, that they changed hands very quickly, and we have real people coming in with real development. So, uh, I, I think that's really important to remember as you go through the official plan at the county level.
Are there any further comments? Go ahead, uh, Counselor Ketchapaw.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to Brian. Brian, this, uh, and, and I think it's a useful, uh, tool to have, the mapping and everything else. Has it been vetted, I should say, by local, uh, planning staff? Okay, I've just noticed some things here which I had understood that were actually, uh, zoned actually, uh, industrial, which is labeled as residential here. But there is, uh, one absentee that I can see, uh, that's missing, and that's the corner of Pressy Line and Bayham Drive. There's thirty acres of industrial land up there.
And I noticed that too, Counselor Ketchapaw.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Uh, there was another spot too in Central Elgin, um, from Centennial Road to Yarmouth Center Road on the north side is, uh, industrial, commercial zoning as well in our official plan. And the south side is commercial.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
Just a comment, and I certainly share the frustration of Counselor Purcell, but I don't how, how much we can do. The right of ownership, um, we, we had Bochemo subdivision, and Port Stanley was probably zoned. Most of us were thirty-five years or younger when that was granted, and it sat there and sat there and sat there. Frustrating as it is, I don't know what the bill do we, we have if someone owns something, that's, do we have the ability to change it?
Same issue with Almont for years, too.
And still do.
Well, I can, I can speak for the town of Elmer, um, for sure with some of our stuff, and it's not necessarily residential, but commercial and industrial, we give them two years to start doing some development on that property. And if it's not, that, that it can be, um, changed. So, because we don't want speculators, um, that's not good, especially with industrial and commercial properties. So I'm not sure if we're still doing that, like we're working on an official plan, like we've done it, but we're still upgrading things. So, but as of recently, that's how we were doing it. And when people were involved in this, they knew that was part of it. So it was written into the contracts, and that's how we kind of protected it, because otherwise you could have, uh, commercial or industrial property tied up for years, and it's just they're speculating because they're hoping that the, uh, real estate values will go up, and then no one else has the opportunity to develop those. So you have merit in what your discussion, uh, Counselor Purcell. I understand completely, um, where you're coming from. Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
Just be on the other side, um, I can understand that if, you know, if it's a recent, um, zoning application, put it, put it on, but for people who
Yeah.
have owned the, the land, and all of a sudden, you know, encroachment of the city comes out and it becomes that, they have rights too, just by the land ownership, don't they? Like, it's just, I, I'm just thinking out loud, I.
Go ahead, Counselor Jones.
Yeah, um, it's, it's a dilemma I think we all, uh, are facing, uh, a cell phone, obviously that, uh, block of industrial land that was created in sixty-five or sixty-six with, uh, Ford's intention to do a mass, uh, facility was produced with, conveyed to the final assembly in one area. That didn't happen, but that also created a, a block of farmland that, uh, for future possible use that never, uh, transpired. Now these farmers have sat on it for many, many years, and, uh, it's, uh, I understand it's very difficult to change industrial land and remove it. So, uh, it's certainly tend to be in a bit of a rock and hard spot, and you hope that somebody with some very deep pockets comes along and offers the, the price that they can't refuse.
Um, I was just going to make a point too, um, from what Counselor Purcell was saying. Because we're now working on the official plan, uh, yes, we know that things have happened in the past, but this is our, this is the future. So we, we can make those changes, and yes, maybe we can't change the past, but we certainly can work from now and move forward. So that's why we work on these plans, so that we have something in place to protect us in the future. And I'm sure, you know, years ago, maybe things were different the way we did business, but now that we've got this opportunity, it's certainly good to have this discussion so that our staff, when we're all working on this official plan, we certainly have that information so we can keep working on it and hopefully get everything in order. Are there any further, oh, sorry, Counselor.
Sorry, uh, you, uh, Madam Warden, um, the, uh, that is not surprising, and I know with the official plan review right now that we're going through, we're getting lots of land speculators buying up land around our urban areas to see, hoping we're going to change that to residential.
Yeah.
Even though it's agricultural or open space.
Go ahead, Counselor McPhail.
I think that it's very important, uh, all of us as mayors, deputy mayors along through our councils, that we have a very, very good look at this, uh, official plan. And, and you know, it, uh, it's always bothered me and, and staff in the village of Rodney, uh, we have, uh, future residential that at some point in time, I guess, was, uh, nobody knew what to do with it in the future. Residential is next door to the Sewage Lagoon. I don't know whether maybe that's the best, uh, moving forward. But again, uh, when the, when the province, uh, calculates your available land, uh, they take a look at the available residential and, and they don't differentiate the fact that it might not be the most desirable piece of future residential. So I think it uses all to really have a close look at what we've got and how, uh, best to go forward, and if we need to shuffle things around a little bit, maybe that's what we need to do, make it more attractive for developers to, uh, to come in and, uh, take advantage of what we've got to offer.
Okay, are there any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. And would everyone like to take about a five or 10-minute break now? We'll reconvene the meeting, please. Next item is Transfer of Lands From Elgin County To The City Of Saint Thomas, Refining Title For A Portion Of Wellington Road, County Road Twenty-Five.
It resolved that the report to council dated November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and entitled Transfer Of Lands From Elgin County To The City Of Saint Thomas, Refining Title For A Portion Of Wellington Road Or County Road Twenty-Five, be received and filed, and that county council approve and authorize the warden and chief administrative officer to execute the agreement attached to this report as Appendix A, and further authorize the county solicitor and/or senior legal counsel to execute such legal or other documents as are reasonably necessary to give effect to the transfer described in the agreement.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Jones. Good morning, Nicholas. I'll turn this over to you now.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, counsel. Uh, so this report is, uh, largely just a, a housekeeping matter. So there was a nineteen ninety-four annexation order issued by the province, uh, to annex a section of Wellington Road, uh, running north from Talbot, just up the hill a bit there. Uh, and at the time, it was not, uh, filed with the command registry office, actually give effect to the transfer of title over those lands. And I know earlier we were talking about where we were at different times, so in nineteen ninety-four, it was in grade five. In discussion with the city, the city had, uh, a title searcher, and then I'll try to answer there, uh, a lot of these out, and we're satisfied with those, uh, lands being accurate to the annexation order. And so the most effective way to just fix all of this is this, subject any questions?
Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Marks.
Makes a lot of sense. You know, over the years campaigning in Lynnhurst area, is it Woodland? You know, you go up to a door, and there may be four or five houses, and two would be in the city and two be in Central Elgin. And it, it's, it just made no sense. So it's, yeah. I think you ask most of the residents around there, they're still not really sure. So just refer to it as Joe Thornton territory.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Nicholas. Um, the next item, council meeting schedule twenty-twenty-two.
It resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer titled Council Meeting Schedule Twenty-Twenty-Two be received and filed, and that council approved the twenty-twenty-two Elgin County Council Meeting Schedule.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Martin.
Just one correction needs to be, as well, it's just at the top of the chart, it says twenty-twenty-one instead of twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, we can certainly make that.
So someone, okay, you'll move. Okay, and someone to second, Counselor Jones. Are there any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor.
Just one question, and we have in our calendar, and I was explaining this to Catherine, um, on Tuesday night, that says December twenty-eighth, there's a county council meeting in our calendar for some reason.
We can make sure that, um, that is removed. It would have been sent perhaps in error. So disregard any meeting invite for December twenty-eighth. We are closed.
I was planning on being here.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. The next item, COVID-nineteen Emergency Team Planning, November Update.
It resolved that the December second, twenty-twenty-one, report titled COVID-nineteen Emergency Team Planning, November Updates, by the chief administrative officer, be received and filed for information.
Someone to move and someone to second, Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Ketchapaw. Is there anything further you want to add? Okay, are there any questions concerning this report? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. So we have our next item up, and I'll ask you to read the resolution, please.
It resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approves official plan amendment number nine to the municipality of Central Elgin Official Plan, file number CEOPA-nine-dash-twenty-one, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the Planning Act.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn this over to staff. Do you have anything further to add to this report?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to counsel, uh, the municipality of Central Elgin submitted official plan amendment number nine for the Port Stanley Harbor Secondary Plan, which provides a long-term vision and plan for repurposing the Port Stanley Harbor lands and their integration with adjacent water. Uh, details are before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Head, uh, Deputy Warden Marks.
Obviously, this is very exciting for Central Elgin, and, uh, I just want to thank Brian, this is coming from staff at Central Elgin. When a good employee does that little extra to make something happen, it, it needs to be noted and publicly acknowledged. And, um, this helps us out a lot. So thank you, Brian, for the extra effort.
Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
And, uh, through you, um, I would also commend Nancy Consada, who worked very hard to get this ready for us. And now that, um, we're getting it on today, because, uh, it is important, we have lands there with, uh, as it's mentioning in there, concerning lands around the harbor thing that we need to get moving on. So we need this officially in our official plan as an amendment.
Okay, are there any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
Uh, just a simple request for some of us old guys. When we do a walk-on, uh, always attach the schematic or the photos so that we know what we're talking about. It's normally there when we, when we get it electronically. It's just easier to look at a picture of, of what we're talking about, where we're talking about. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Noted. We'll certainly ensure that we either share it on the screen or provide you with a print copy. Our apologies.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. The next item up is Emergency Procurement And The Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Project.
It resolved that the report from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise be received.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, uh, Counselor Mennel and Counselor Purcell. And I'll turn this over to Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to counsel. Uh, we just, uh, staff just recently learned of, uh, within the last few days, uh, that, uh, Terrace Lodge Kitchen Rooftop Unit, uh, has failed and is beyond repair. And so accordingly, uh, seeking emergency procurement of its replacement, uh, of a replacement unit, uh, twelve-week delivery, twelve-to-sixteen week delivery is what we're looking at. Uh, so we're looking to, um, procure that as soon as possible. Uh, working very closely with D. Grant, our contractor, to, uh, ensure seamless installation as it too affects their planned construction activities. Uh, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. That, sorry, I should also note, uh, estimated, uh, value of, of this unit, including installation, additional electricals, is, uh, approximately eighty thousand dollars. This was a unit that had been planned to be replaced in, in, uh, the one-to-five-year timeline. But again, as mentioned, it's, it's, it can't be repaired and, and needs to be replaced.
Go ahead, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, um, Madam Warden. This is the air makeup unit?
Uh, it, it provides both, it is, as well as provides both heating and cooling to, to the kitchen. So, uh, temporary provisions have been made in the interim.
Yeah, are there any further questions? Okay, are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. The next item up is Council Committee Appointments.
It resolved that county council approve that council committee and local board appointments for 2022 as presented by the chief administrative officer and as recommended by Ford and French.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor McPhail and Counselor Jones. And are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Next item up is Council Correspondence.
It resolved that staff be directed to review of road safety concerns on Imperial Road entering into Port Bruce and report back to council.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Deputy Warden Marks. Did you want to speak to this, Julie? Do you have some comments?
That, Madam Warren, thank you.
Go ahead.
There was, there was an accident right on the curve of Port Bruce before you hit the bridge about a month ago. And the individual that has the house right on the, on the curve, that's number 10 since he had the house. And so he requested that, the township asked the county to look into having guardrails there, and I, and so certainly would appreciate if Brian investigated that to see if it warrants guardrails.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. The next item, 7.2 Items For Information Consent Agenda.
It resolved that correspondence items number one and two be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Mennel. Are there any questions or comments concerning the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Other business statements and inquiries by members? Seeing none? There's no notice of motion? Matters of urgency? Okay, so we'll move to closed meeting.
It resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with municipal act to discuss a number of matters in municipal act section 239. Two of those matters are included in your agenda.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Jones. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. So we'll move to motion to rise and report.
It resolved that we now rise and report.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchapaw and Counselor McPhail. All those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Next resolution, please.
It resolved that the report from the county solicitor be received, and that staff proceed as directed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Deputy Warden Marks, all those in favor? And that's carried. The next item.
It resolved that the report from the county solicitor be received.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin and Counselor Mennel, all those in favor? That's carried. The next item.
It resolved that the report from the general manager of engineering, planning and enterprise be received.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchapaw and Counselor Jones, all those in favor? And that's carried. Next item, please.
It resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received, and that staff proceed as directed. And I will just acknowledge or notify council that there will be an open session discussion following all closed rise and reports.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Purcell and Counselor McPhail, all those in favor? And that's carried, the next item.
It resolved that the update from the chief administrative officer and general manager of engineering, planning and enterprise be received.
Okay, someone to move, someone to second. Counselor Jones and Deputy Warden Marks, all those in favor? That's carried.
It resolved that the verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received, and that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, someone to move, someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Counselor Jones, all those in favor? And that's carried. And we'll now receive the report from you.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Warren, through you to members of council. Elgin County has contracted 911 Primary Public Safety Answering Point Service to Northern 911 since 2010. Elgin's contract with Northern 911 ends at the end of 2021. Revised pricing from Northern 911 to support an additional one-year extension has been received, and the current rate of 46.6 cents per resident will remain unchanged. It is recommended that, following review by the county solicitor, the CIO be directed and authorized to sign a longer extension agreement with Northern Communication Services Incorporated.
So are there any questions or comments about this report? Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin and Counselor McPhail, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
It resolved that we now adopt recommendations from committee of the whole.
Counselor Jones and Counselor Mennel, all those in favor? And that's carried. Consideration of bylaws.
Read a first, second, and third read of bylaw 2146, being a bylaw to restrict the weight of vehicles passing over bridges and to amend bylaw 1526.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchapaw and Counselor Purcell, all those in favor? Carried, and the next bylaw?
Read a first, second, and third read of bylaw 21-47, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the December 7th and 9th 2021 meeting.
Okay, someone to move, someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Martin, all those in favor? And that's carried. And adjournment?
So move.
It resolved that we do now adjourn at 12:33 PM to meet again on January 11th, 2022, at 9:00 AM.
Okay, so Deputy Warden Marks moved it, and someone to second. Counselor Mennel, and all those in favor? And that's carried, and thank you very much. It was a great meeting.